Welcome to Jaytown Township Authorities August 6, 2020 meeting. An open meeting, the meeting is being taped recording. Okay, roll call.
Jim Hatrick.
Here.
Deb Antonio.
Yep.
Lisa Brows.
Here.
Fran Gosseson.
Here.
Patrick Wolkovich.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, report on the executive session on July 9, 2020. No decisions were made. Visitor's comments. No visitors?
Yeah, well, we have to do the emails.
Oh, all right, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the first, um, one and I can pass it around to the board, um, is Al County Planning Commission. Yeah, it's about, uh, um, fiscal year 2020, Al County Committee Development Grant Program. And it just saying what it's doing, when it's, uh, getting, you're gonna, Ryan will probably touch on that in the meeting, so if you want to pass that around. Um, the second one is from Bob Cappel, Attention Water and Sewer Authority boards. Uh, please this email attaches to your correspondence for your, um, August meeting under the right to know law. It just saying open request, he has submitted to the board supervisors for information about the letter to the authority and anything else, or letters that we wrote, image of files, that's all that says.
I think it also says something about, he say were, he was denied.
That lawyer's thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, um, we did get a copy of that somewhere here.
We do have a copy?
Yeah, somewhere, yes. Here's, uh, if you want to pass that around, but I want it back, because I got it back.
Give it to me later.
And we received one from Christine Gavazzi. I'm sending this comment email because I'm unable to attend your meeting. At a prior meeting this year, the supervisors requested advice from their attorney regarding joining our two authorities. I would assume and hope that this was what they asked the solicitor. Pros and cons of joining the water authority and sewage authority, impact concerning the data of each authority, opinion of our solicitor on whether this would be a positive or negative move for the township authorities and users. I did, I did send, um, a request from our solicitor to give us an update, I have not received that, so I'm hoping to see it on in the near future. Do you want to pass that around?
Was she also asking for information from their solicitor, or was that just on our behalf?
I think she had planned a requ- or she or Bob committed a request to supervisors.
Yeah.
Their solicitor's opinion and their work on what they've done with the letter.
So, yeah, so we need to ask our solicitor?
I did send a request to our solicitor with the following, uh, the solicitor's
Questions.
Questions and stuff, and I gave them copies of the letters and a copy of their lawyer, what the lawyer said.
Okay, and we have a deadline date for that, we, we've asked her to reply.
Yeah, it was supposed to be today, but I have not seen it.
Thanks, Sharon.
At least he, he at least needs to be made aware of what might be tripping down.
Yeah, well, he, um, he's got that now. And I got one from today, or August 4th, uh, from Christine. Sent you July 2nd meeting was canceled, I am sending you an attachment which was a visitor comment for July 2nd. I don't know if you read it this Thursday, you disregarded it, so I'm sending it again. There seems to be a real problem with our supervisors in not wanting to give out the info that everyone is entitled to about the research pertaining to the proposed merger of the authorities. And you not know what that is. You can add this to attach email as a visitor comment. She was unable to attend because of the virus. Hey, I got these set tonight, so. Um, I also got another email from Christine Gavazzi. You may incorrect, they listed my email for the original July 2nd meeting as canceled, it's not, whatever, whatever. Outstream your maintenance report for July, you listed take pizza cutter to Dave's for tune-up.
That's what we call it.
What is a pizza cutter?
It's the, what are they, it's a, it's a steel four hundred something, it's, it's a,
As a saw.
Yeah, it's a, it's like
Concrete.
Concrete saw, yeah, we, that's why I put it in quotations, pizza.
He says, I assume this is not cut pizza food.
Right.
It is a tool for water plant repair work. Not everyone who's a layman would know what it must be a tool. So there's that.
I was gonna call it the road cutter, but it's not just for cutting roads.
A lot of people calling it zippy saw.
Yeah.
Okay, last, um, correspondence I have is from Bob Cappel. He called the office this morning and I told him there is a meeting, but it's, um, not open to the public, it was advertised. And that we sit, we haven't ended up at the office. He come in and actually measured the office and wanted to know how, how we spaced our things out, I said, we just go out, we space, and he says, what about ventilation? Sometimes we open a door and they have an air conditioner. So I don't know what he wants, so he is, the CDC guidelines, social distance should be a minimum of six feet. And, well, you know, so that's what that was about, so.
Just like Jimmy said earlier, if we have an issue, we go out in the garage and we can paint a little six-foot deposit, right?
Three thousand people go to your race car races, we know that.
That's better.
We all sit in here, we all have masks, we're fairly spaced apart, I'm close to her.
My big thing from the beginning of it was.
Did anybody get from the township, the letter from their attorney?
We have a copy.
I was at the township meeting, last meeting, okay?
I think I forgot to put that on our correspondence.
Now, this is the letter from their attorney. And the thought of, you could have a copy of this to give to everybody. Uh, this is what your, she wrote back to the township, so I picked up one of these. Now, I was there, we were passed, they want to make a date for everybody to meet, now that's up to you. You might want to vote on a date, say you want to meet and say, you know, come up with, uh, different ways to show us we're feasible to do this, or what, so.
Well, I want to read what the lawyer has to say.
And I'll, and, and I will tell you one thing on here. When you read this, okay, the top of the line is, and I do not agree with this. Okay, this is a request information right on the top, it says both authorities were created by the township. That's not true.
Not true.
Because, uh, the burned-out water homes, and it wasn't far back when Forest Homes and,
Yeah, yeah.
And Weedville had their own water supply down here. And burned-out homes started in 1948.
Yeah.
And the Authority Act was not formed until 1986.
Yeah.
And the only reason they went to the township, because after they made the Authority Act, that's the only way you had to go through your townships to get money. You just couldn't go out, you had to go, you know,
Yeah.
You had to go through the Authority Act to get money, and you had to go through your townships. But it was not formed, the water authority was not formed. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, it was not formed by the township.
It was not formed, now, the storage authority was.
Yeah.
They spent their own money from the township, made the loan, you understand?
To hook up, to hook up, saying.
So what they're trying to say is, we have to, we have to go back, because you guys can take a copy. Yeah, they created you, they, no, they can do that. They can do that to the storage, but I don't think they could do that to the water.
Is that letter due to July 13th? Yes, the reason why I forgot to put it in is I sent this to the lawyer and I had it in the water.
Well, that's okay, you can take a copy, if anybody wants one, there it is. But just remember that saying on the top.
Yeah.
And I even worked on the top when it, in 1948.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and so they, we wasn't formed then.
Yeah.
Okay, we might
We existed already.
Well, they had to do that too when, remember they merged them all. So they had to go into the Authority Act.
Yeah.
And I understand that, but we still, I say, we was not formed by them, okay?
So I had it here, but I, I emailed it and forgot to make copies for everybody.
And the only thing I could say is, I told them I would mention, if this board wants to meet with the township, they want to meet with the township and the storage authority as one board to explain all this. So it's up to you guys if you want to go or not.
Why didn't they send us a letter?
Hey, we've tried to meet with them several times.
I don't know, I just picked that up down there when I was at the authority and I thought they were gonna send you, did they send you one of them?
She hasn't seen this.
Oh, she hasn't seen that?
Yes, I did, I, I, I
You sent it to the lawyer.
I sent it to the lawyer, forgot to make that.
Well, she's got a copy, so she can make you guys a copy of that, but I think it's important if you read that, if everybody reads that, so.
The process for dissolving the authority would be the same that was taken to create them.
Well, the problem is, they didn't create it.
So it's done by order, so it's like
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I, I can't see where they created the water authority, when we was way before the, the act of the
And I, I still don't think it's as simple as just creating.
Stephanie Farah.
Yes.
Who's that?
Rex Neese.
You answered my question, that I already knew the answer.
I know you did.
There's still, there's still so many questions with it, why?
Well, that's what I mean, if you, if you want to, just, uh, make a thing on who wants to go, or who don't want to go.
They need to contact us.
Oh, I
They need to contact us.
Well, that's what they did, they sent it to me.
We've, we've tried to meet with them numerous amounts of time, and any time that we ever tried to, the key people would never show up.
Did you want a copy of that?
Because the only way, I'll meet with everybody there.
Yep.
All three of them.
And I, I guess what I heard, their great find was
Yeah, everybody, everybody.
So, I mean
Ain't gonna be no missing people.
It's up to you, but if you guys want to, write up a letter stating
Yeah.
That on a given time, whatever time, you know, it'd have to be where everybody can be there, who wants to go.
I heard too, their great find, their plan was to pick a date, and who can make it, and who can make it, who can't, can't. That's not directly
Yeah, there ain't gonna be no can't. It's gonna, everybody's gonna be there, there ain't gonna be none.
Well, anyways, you guys can make that decision on if you want to send them a letter.
Send them a letter, ask them, you know.
Well, you're on the board too now, friend, so what's your input?
My input is, like I wrote in my letter, they have to show me where it's feasible for this board to do it. Right now, I don't see no feasible reason.
Yeah, not feasible just for one person.
Well, I don't see the feasible, and I don't see the reason.
Yeah.
What, what caused them to
Neither of us, so.
They're gonna decide this.
Yeah, all of a sudden, huh.
So that's what I'm saying, you either want to meet with them or you don't. Maybe you're better off not to meet with them. I, I don't, you know, I don't know what you guys is going, because I'm not gonna speak for you.
Definitely, right, there needs to be, there needs to be a discussion.
There needs to be community fairness between everyone.
So if you, if you want to meet with them about it, just, uh, write them a letter.
Yes.
And see what time that the storage picked with them, or what you wanted there. Now, I'm willing to go to meetings, but like I said, you're gonna have to change my attitude on it, you know what I mean? My attitude is, I don't think we need it.
I have a lot of questions that need answered, both as a board member and an employee.
Do you think we should wait till we hear from our solicitor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, before you write the letter, because he might have something else.
It still won't hurt to reach out to them and say, we, we want to have this conversation, we, we want to talk and know what's going on, but
To be
We all want to be there, we
To be honest with you, what I mean by all, I mean our solicitor too. I think he should be there too.
Yeah.
Oh, I think there's gonna be a lot of legal things that we need to know beforehand.
Absolutely, yeah, he needs to be there.
There's a lot of legality that comes with swords.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a long process. And who pays that?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and they're
Waste some more money.
They're, they've started all this, so we need to decide what, because It's really Right now, I know what the vote is.
I don't think you can just dissolve the storage, you just can't do that.
I think, I don't think they can do it without this board approval.
Right.
Period, okay, all right, so.
Well, we can't go on anything other than we got a letter from Jamie.
Yeah.
That's always fine, so.
Well, anyways, that's why I brought that, because I didn't know if she would get one or not.
I appreciate it.
I did get one.
Then they asked, they asked me and the storage, uh, if, you know, so I said, I'll take it back and I will ask them for a date, if they want to set a date and a time, so, like I said, it's up to you guys.
I did get it, I mentioned it, I forgot to give copies to the board, because I sent it on to our solicitor.
That's all right, so at least we all know, and when you read that top part, I do not myself believe that they were, the water authority was formed by,
Right.
You know, because the act, they can come in if you read up on it, so like 86, 82, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah.
So
Their meeting will be the 20th, so. I guess, uh, we should at least hear something by that from them, so.
From them, and then we should wait to hear in our solicitor, we should have all that in the talks in a row.
But if it, if it's gonna be under the premise of, we're gonna hold a meeting, if you can make it, you can make it, if you can't, you can't, like, that's not the way.
No.
I'll be very disappointed.
Everybody, everybody will be there.
Our lawyer will be.
Or there won't be no.
Yeah. Whatever he tells us to do, that's a little bit, absolutely, that's everybody.
I'm waiting on a response from him, so.
Okay, move right along, okay? Okay, approve the agenda.
Um, it's a, you have to ask them if there's any additions, I have one addition.
All right.
I like to, I don't know if I can do that. Um, under number four, for new business, I want to put Lisa Brows as a signature, on a signature card. But can you forget to do that?
Yes, we need to do that.
Under new business.
I can do that, if you want me to.
No, I have to write a letter and then she'll have to go to the bank and sign.
But I mean, I can make the motion.
She can add that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, under new business number four, we'd like to put for Lisa Brows to be put on for signatures at the bank. And we'll be losing our bank, so if you
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're okay because of the night drop box here so far. And they can mail it in the night drop box here, so.
We'll just have to figure out logistics.
And when do they end in the bank?
December 11th.
We'll just have to figure out the logistics of when you have to go to the bank, what you do, I don't think that will be hard to figure out.
No, the only time I have to go to the bank is actually when I get cash, because I have this here, a dozen checks. And, you know, I
Yeah, for the most part, right now, you're going to the bank to pick up payments.
Payments.
They'll be here and they're still in.
Yeah, that's the only time I go to the bank for cash, but most of the time I go for payments.
And maybe if a bank takes over, we can make arrangements with them to follow the same practice and
Yeah, but we probably would have to switch our accounts and stuff like that.
Definitely.
So I don't know.
I mean
Okay, let's start with the signature card and go from that, if we need to.
And anything else that needs to be added in or anything?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of number four, Lisa Brows on this signature card.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
I
All opposed?
We'll have to vote on that too, so. Okay, approval of the minutes.
I have a motion to that.
Yeah.
Do we have to change that, Sharon, in the minutes for the last meeting with, because of Christine's, uh,
I would, if she's making that request, then I would.
Making the request.
I would have to just do it on this here minutes, I'd have to make a change. I would have to change it and put it in the August minutes, same we changed it.
Okay.
Um, which, what was that again, under?
Um, she had put a request in under, um, a visitor's comment instead of it being under correspondence, because it was
Okay, I'll just move it. Because I did get a correspondence, really it was on an email, and I just put it as
Right, right.
So
But when I looked at it, at the top
Correspondence to email our visitors.
Does that AC screw up your thing on recording, or no? It'd be some background noise, but I don't think it would be. I mean, we can just speak up.
Not unless you want to open the door. Not unless you want to open the door.
It's not bad outside.
Let's just open the door.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can do whatever you want.
There's a thing that'll hold the door open.
I might buy one.
Okay, you can, uh, you can make a motion, they'll prove that for me to do it in the next minutes to put a show on that there's a correction to the July 9th minutes. And put it up there, that's how we do that.
Do I need to do that now?
Yep.
Make a motion to change Christine Gavazzi's
Yeah, pass approve the minutes.
To visitors' comments instead of correspondence for the, uh, the last meeting on July 9th.
Yep, I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, treasury report.
Hold on one second.
Did we approve these minutes?
Huh?
Did we approve these minutes? We made the amendment, but did we approve?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of, you made the motion to approve the minutes with that, I would have
Okay.
That, you know. The treasurer's report should read, I sure forgot to change from May, it should be, uh, July 2020. Sorry, I forgot to change the date up in top.
August, or July?
No, July, should be July 2020, sorry. It says May 2020, it should be July 2020. So I'll make that correction.
We missed that last month too?
Yeah, I just caught it late now. The balance in the checking account is of 630, 2020, with $66,646.69. Total deposits were 38,361.50. Uh, the total accounts payable was 39,941.61. The balance in the checking account is 731, 2020, with $65,066.58. The balance in the savings account is of 630, 2020, with $246,174.91. Balance in savings account is of 731, 2020, was 246,195.76. And since, um, I did this here, I transferred $30,000 from checking to savings in the beginning of August.
Good stuff.
So.
Very good. Okay, approval of the bills.
Uh, the bills, total accounts payable bills was 39,941.61. And the bill from E Ads Group was for the phosphate, so it's not for the Forest Project, so that's what that was. So, that's all, so that's what the total of the bills were for the month.
It is number seven, 941 payment. On the accounts payable, on the bills.
Which, what, what?
941 payment.
That's your, um, with FICA withholding every month, we have to do that, so we don't get fined. So, that's what it's a 941 payment, it's your FICA and social security withholding taxes for payroll.
I'll make a note on number 25, water testing to Mahavey Laboratory. Under the new comprehensive monitoring plan, any entry point sampling has to be representative of all of the system's sources. Uh, we were due for SOC testing, so I had to do one set of SOCs with the well. One set of SOCs with Burn's Run, one set of SOCs with Curzero. So that's why that's so high. Uh, Exter Supply number 26, that is the Seaquest, uh, corrosion control chemical. That we won't see back until I run out. I think otherwise that's all I have to
Anybody else have any other questions on the treasurer's report?
Okay, need a motion to approve the bills?
I have a motion.
Have a say on? Yeah, I said. All in favor?
All right.
And all opposed?
I'm abstaining due to my payroll.
Correspondents.
That was from Al County Planning Department.
Oh, I put that under visitors' thing, I read them all, so that should go under, um
Yeah, we already looked in there. Email from Bob Cappel.
Yeah, and I, I'll put Bob Cappel's under visitors, and this here just under, um, correspondence.
Delinquencies.
Delinquencies, we have none, because the bills are still current.
Yeah. Good. If you're warm and uncomfortable, anyway, sit in front of the form, turn this back on, because
Yeah, I can turn it off.
I sweat every day, I ain't gonna sit here in a meeting and try to be comfortable.
Try it out, we'll see what this, it should tell me.
Go ahead and shut that door. We'll just all speak up a little bit for
I think we're fine, it's showing the bars and
Okay, maintenance report.
Okay, uh, 70,000, 70,050 miles on the F, uh, 250, 2011. The F-550 dump is up for inspection, so I wasn't able to get an exact number of miles on it. We are a hair over 53,200.
How is that truck been working, all right?
Pretty good, it is gonna need some stuff. Just off the top of my head, I know, we think there's a brake valve hanging up, so if he's ready to do that. There's a split in the muffler. He's, last I heard, he wasn't gonna try to put his muffler on, but weld it, patch it, to get us through. Save us some money that way. Tires, it is going to be tough.
Before the snowfall.
Yeah, they, the side walls are cracking, so I probably can't give him a pretty good amount until we get prices.
Much more.
I would expect, I mean, we bought a used truck, so
Yeah.
I would expect to have some money, but we won't get it.
Well, we do need a tire, so, yeah. All right, okay, carry on, Sharon.
Responded to 161 pose, checked the facilities and buildings, no grassing we needed, that's heated. And here is the part that filled up my entire one. Five, waters. First, we started at the beginning of the month with burn-built fire hydrant. The vault's rusted and the flames detached. Fire company had to use it, not their fault, it's just war up, it wore out, they, they're rusting, very young. Shortly after that, um, we were just about ready to lift our boil water advisory, and a four-inch transite line broke at the bottom of it. And so we had to deal with that, we extended the boil water advisory. And shortly after that was a three-quarter service, uh, dropped, pulled out during excavation in Burnell. Luckily, we were able to shut it off, we used a quick tap, which I only really care to use in a type situation where you can't do a hot tap, but thankfully, that's all it was, like, we thought we got pounded, I said, I know exactly what this is, and I watched this, our end of the plant, tighten it down, we were done. So, uh, we put a note in the curb box, we were gonna take the curb box out, since it's a big block, I said, if somebody develops this, they don't want to pay for another tap on it. So what we did was, we shut it off the quick tap, we left it off the quick tap, and the curb box is also off. And we put a note inside the curb box that if this needs to be recapped, or somebody wants to use this,
Very good.
they have to dictate the tap and put it back up. But in the meantime, we left it off, it can't Just when things were getting better, Spruce Street blew apart, uh, three-inch transite stress fracture on the bottom. Only thing I can figure out is there's a large chunk of asphalt that was laying on top of the line from the previous repair. And with how dry things are,
Yeah.
Just pushed it down, and that's where it blew. Um, then we had a call in about an inch and a quarter hand wheel leak valve. The yard was wet, and I found it right away, it was coming out of the curb box, we repaired that on Tuesday. So, we're good there. So, oil-treated the other side of the F-550, off the plant floor in the office, and left for push branches over the bank from Burnell neighbors, uh, three years ago, they dumped their grass and stuff over there cooking, so, um, unfortunately, they had it too far on the flat side, so we just got them terribly, pushed it replaced gaskets for two liter meters in the system, cleaned out the truck, wired the backup alarm. Uh, as Christine mentioned, the pizza cutter, uh, we took the concrete cutter to Dave's for a tune-up, we had a really hard time getting it running on this first. They just, air filter, uh, smart plug, and that seemed to be what covered it. We had another leak called in in force inside a homeowner's house. Could not find the valve outside, so I had the guys go down and scrape, um, the surface to try and find it out, we could not. But, um, we were able to tighten up the packing nut and slow it down, it's a real small trickle. The homeowner has agreed that we can let it go until August, when the new line comes in. And we don't have to shut it down, or have to mess with it anymore. So that'll be a curb box and we'll fix it. And this for operation 34. Distribution was 7.4 million, water produced was 7.35 million. Surface plant was the most of that, with 7 million gallons, and the well ran for 350,000 gallons. We need submitted DEP reports for June, completed DAP lab, backwash backlash filters, and it makes it to log monthly data to Excel, Dennis helped me out with that too today, mentioned it for that. Worked on, they completed 2019 CCR, I mentioned in the last meeting, the, uh, the links at the bottom of the page, it's on the website, it's been posted all over the valley, the post offices and stuff, so. Isolated the system as necessary for Burnell, we had spruce and Calabogie deep repairs. Updated the swift reach call list the morning of Burnell leak, put out PNs as appropriate for leaks, mentioned the maintenance report, PN is public notification. Corresponded DEP regarding the leaks, first was the full system boil water advisory for Burnell. The system boil water advisory was ready to lift, but for the other transite line blew, so I extended the boil water advisory. We lifted the system boil water advisory when samples came back okay. They had us collect multiple samples in the system per day, all representative of areas affected water, area without water, area, have very watered areas that water could have migrated to, uh, and used the township to interconnect every single day, to test it, to make sure they didn't have any issues. Posted boil water advisory to Spruce Street residents after the three-inch break. Posted boil water advisory to Spruce Street residents after the three inch break. There is no boil water advisory for the Burnell three quarter repair. We showed up with the quick tap and no boil water advisory for the Calabria leak. We were able to shut off all the curb stops, there were pipe houses, the line was flushed prior to, uh, returning them to service, and DEP was content to allow us to do that. Sent email to supervisors informing them of the leak slash boil water advisory status part of their meeting. Side note, they did not read my letter, but they read my ex coworker's letter regarding the issue, so. Whether I should say this now or not, I'm a little upset about that, but-
No, what was that?
I sent them an e, I sent the supervisors an email before their meeting.
Alright.
Uh, I have a copy of it, I'll give you guys a copy. Said basically what was happening, I expect you'll have people at the meeting tonight talking about this. My former coworker sent a letter of his own to the township as a complaint. They read it and distributed it to everybody at that meeting because it was important and had, it was for the public health. But I don't think there was any mention of the email that came internally from the water-
Was there a friend?
You were there.
They had it on the table. It was a big discussion, if you watch my YouTube page, they had a big discussion that, uh, their argument was, people's argument was, why do you have that there if you're gonna put one person's correspondence on the table for everybody to read, you have to put them all on?
Exactly.
So they did make a motion that corresponds to them, and I kinda agree with that. You either got to come in and put a right to know in it, correspondence to someone, okay, not put them on a table, so that was the biggest argument.
Yeah, I agree.
And, uh, so, it's just that they were laying on the table, they'd come in right by the main package, and the argument was, if you're gonna do that with one correspondence, you should do that with all of them.
Absolutely.
So they made a motion that if you wanted correspondence, they ain't gonna lay them on a table like that no more, no more, gonna be able to pick them, slam them. And go in and get a right to know act for correspondence out of the township.
I agree.
And that's a good thing.
I, I agree, like, if, if somebody wants to request his letter, that's fine, the upsetting part to me was, I had sent one with internally what happened. And I don't think they acknowledged that, so.
They probably would've managed it, I watched the tape again to see.
There was way too much focus on what I'm calling a complaint letter, and no clarification of what happened, I just, I wanted to make our board aware of.
Did they reply to you at all?
No response.
Then we need to send the township a letter saying that they're not recognizing the operators, uh.
What, there's nothing, um, and I'm, I'm going to go to their next meeting and bring it up, I'm not gonna argue with them, I'm just gonna say. You're, you're crossing the line, when you're handing that stuff out, it starts putting them in a situation where it's libel and slander against the name. By them-
Well, you oughta be using that way, huh?
It's really advertised, you know, it's, it's just, it's not professional, I know it's public information, but it, it's just highly unprofessional for them to advertise it.
Well, it's not the procedure to do that.
Correct.
It's one person's opinion.
Yep.
That they claim too much pressure.
So, um, so anyhow, uh, repaired chlorine leak at the well, uh, attend commissioners meeting for a CDBG grant opening. Replace, replace chlorine, um, tubing at the well, clean and oiling rollers. Replace fuses on all filter panels for SV one B, the recirculation valve. Seems to increase the flow about one to two gallons per day each, valves opening as designed. Basically, there's a loop between the two filters and a valve on both sides. And it just, it was designed that way, I know for purpose, obviously, it allows more volume, uh, does not affect anything as far as filtration, just allows more water they got to handle. That was the way it was designed, it was still wired that way through the new SCADA, so. Fuses were blown, I put them in, and they've been working since, so I'm not sure what the issue was, but, um. Okay, tested samples for Venice Branch Water Association, can check your reports, and again, twenty nineteen CCR available at HTTP, go H two O dot net, or slash A water, or slash CCR.
I do see that you got the phones working, so I gotta get the phone call.
Yeah, it started working a little better, so-
I got a phone call, everybody got a phone call.
The list, we had maybe three people call with updated info when I'd made the, the next calls, but what I did was, instead of it calling once and hanging up, with like, with all the defaults, I had it call. I had it retry, I think, three times. So if you're on the other line, et cetera, et cetera, it gives more of an opportunity for it to keep trucking out. If it, if somebody's still on the phone or just isn't coming to answer, that's beyond my control, but it did seem to reach out to more people when I had it.
Everybody I talked to-
There were some people that said that he didn't have a phone or-
Yeah, we did.
Everybody I talked to got it, and I did express that at the township meeting, that you had some trouble with your phone service and stuff like that, so.
Yep, so I think that's the key, just make it repeat, 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 and then after so many times, if they can't get you, it's not gonna get you, so. We're still gonna send a letter and get updated info, I had some cell phone numbers I put in, so it can, it can send the text out as well. Big, big learning experience, we know it works, we know, we know it does it.
Lit then?
Yep, that's all I have.
They owned old business, CDBG grant.
Um, so, after the bid opening with the county commissioner, the apparent loan bidder at that point was Continental. Uh, after reviewing all the bid packets and everything, Continental was in fact the low bidder, they had all their qualifications in their packets, so. At the August fourth meeting on Tuesday, the commissioner awarded the contract to Continental building. Um, I don't have, I dropped a binder in my office this morning, uh, I believe their bid price was around four hundred thirty-five thousand.
Four hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred and four. Cause I do have a comment. When I, when you're done.
Um, so, right now, we're just kinda going through paperwork, um, meeting their bonds, getting agreements signed, that kinda stuff. Um, haven't talked to, uh, their owner, Rick Morzella, personally to figure out an exact start date, and we had talked to him on the day after, uh, the bid opening. He was probably booking towards the end of August, so hopefully Sheldon's gonna grab that in August.
Uh, I'll comment on that, first of all, are we gonna have somebody hired to watch this whole thing?
Yes.
So if things don't go bad like the other issues, seems like every issue, the water company got involved in being that main line of their month.
No. Um, in, in the original budget that we had submitted to the water authority for this, um, grant, part of that was our inspection fee, so we will have somebody up here the entire time. Keeping track of quantities and everything.
So you're already in the budget?
Yes.
Of the five hundred and thirty thousand?
No, no, because the CDBG grant only pays for construction, and one thing they don't pay for is engineering. So our original agreement that we have signed, that inspection is in that.
That we have to pay?
Yes.
So you're gonna bill us daily for every day that you're here?
Yes, again, it, it won't be me, I won't be up here.
Whoever comes up is what I'm saying.
Yes.
But it's gonna be watched daily, so the roads put back in right?
Correct.
So we don't have no issues like others gives that we had before.
Correct.
Cause I noticed that the bid was a hundred thousand dollars less than the other.
Yes.
So, you know what I mean, when you bid that much less, you gotta come up with that kinda money, understand what I mean? It's not thirty or forty, some of them it's over a hundred, some was seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. And this bid convinced four thirty-three.
I love it talking to several of the other contractors on the following days, that all the other contractors reach out immediately, asking for the bid tabs, other bid prices, that kinda stuff, but. Whenever I was just talking to them, you know, uh, we'd be asking a little bit, and I, I asked them about their pricing, and they said, oh, you know, we expect the Continental to be lower, they're, it's right in their backyard. I asked, um, several places how far they were away, they're two hours away, and, I mean, that's, that's per diem, that's travel, that's a lot more expenses they have put into the project than somebody that is close, has headquarters in Ridgeway, or. That, I think that had a lot to do with it in terms of bid prices on that.
Because the boring was five hundred and thirty-five, and I thought the boring would be cheaper than-
What do you have there that I don't know?
I went to the meeting.
That's from the commissioner's.
That's a meeting, I, I, I made, I made this out when I went to the meeting, I went to the meeting. And I just dropped down all the bids, and I put this on cruise bait.
Yeah, I have a copy if you want.
Yeah. What I'm saying is when you're a hundred some thousand under, everybody else, if not a hundred and fifty thousand or some, cause some of them, highest one is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. You know what I mean, so you start wondering how you come to four hundred and thirty-three, see what I'm saying?
No, I mean, Frank, we personally reached out the following day to double check, making sure their owner was good with the price, and he said, yes, we're good with the price, we looked over everything.
I just wanted to make sure it's being watched, because we had other issues.
The county watches that too, yeah.
Yes, yeah, Tracy Garland from the county will be down periodically, we have a full-time inspector there, because it, I mean, it's, it's crucial to watch that kinda stuff, even, even with good contractors.
If this fallen projects, they all come back on the, on the water, so you don't want that to happen.
The original stuff they put down there.
Yeah. So anyways, okay, I just wanted to express how much lower it was.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I, for the most part, I personally went through different bids and compared and thinking, you know, maybe a number of business or anything, and it was, I mean, proportionally, like, all the numbers were proportional, everything was there, they had a complete bid packet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Alrighty. Again, it's, it's, it's our neck on the lines too whenever it comes to these projects. If, if something goes astray, come, come back on us just to-
That's why we rely on you. Alright, frost bait.
Uh, we turned frost bait on to the wells today, we're testing and putting like all out from there, um, set it up, seeing what kinda residuals, seeing what kinda different aesthetic qualities we are getting. Um, in doing so, we did look, um, would like to try a couple of different things with the phosphate, it seems to be working as it should. We, uh, I think we have a couple ideas to get, the, Patrick has been telling me about, you know, some people can have like a chlorine smell when we do run the well. Um, we think we have a couple ideas to try alleviating that, that when Patrick gets back from vacation, we'll call you a couple of answers. But as of now, it seems like it's working good.
Wonderful. PH small water and sewer ground.
Haven't heard anything new on that, still working at, announcing in September.
Okay, we could bind the truss taps. Oh, we went over that one.
Do you wanna take that off the agenda?
Yeah, there's no update.
Yeah, I need to-
There hasn't had any update.
Okay. Need, need a motion to take that off, take the fine truss taps off, you know, the horrible, but, I have a motion for that? Now I'll make a motion to take that off.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Who's opposing then?
I'm opposing.
Yeah, the poor father, right?
Yeah, Dad and Jim are opposing.
Do we, well, should we have more discussion?
Yeah, we got three, uh, there's three opposing, and it's, it's-
I mean, I can carry the load. There hasn't, well. Maybe, yeah, now that I think about it. There hasn't been anything on the property, but there have been some instances close to the property. So, yeah, I will change my vote to no, and maybe should keep that on there just for a little bit to see.
Absolutely.
So. Yeah, Deb Jim and Patrick Hill Melch.
I don't use it on.
Okay, automatic gate opener.
I have, I reached out to, tried to reach out to Kessler's for an updated quote, um, I did not hear anything back, so I have their original quote, um. Twenty for the aluminum gate with operator, ten thousand five hundred one, and it said, uh, the steel pipe gate with operator was nine thousand nine X seven one fourteen. Not much of a difference, I would recommend the aluminum, uh, ten foot man gate, that's in the rear, not totally necessary, um, one thousand two hundred sixty-seven fifty. What's there, they didn't terminate the fence when they put it in, they just kind of added the gate gate. It does the job, um, the big part is the four foot man gate in the back, you can climb under, crawl under, that one would be done, so six hundred thirty-seven eighty-four. That was from Kessler's and DuBois', um, I still try to reach out to them and see if these numbers are still accurate.
And who was the owner?
Red Rock Fence Company, they were the original ones that put in this fence. For a slide gate and an opener, uh, and a three by six aluminum chain link fence walk-through, one in the front, uh, because you can't let people walk through a slide gate, and the one in the back, uh, that needs repairing. Uh, that covers the two three by sixes. Removes and disposed, the double drag gate is there, furnished and installed, uh, one twenty foot opening by six high on the end, and near slide gate. I can go into detail, but their price was twenty thousand five hundred. So I'd say that was good.
Does the other quote involve disposal?
I-
I'm hiring somebody to stand out there and open, close the gate.
I don't know if it includes this.
I, I do think-
Cut it off, take it to B and D.
I do think we oughta fix that back gate though, for that thousand dollars.
Yeah, whether, whether we do-
Uh, whether you guys do or have it fixed, uh, you should, cause if any kid get in there, we'd love to bring that crap.
I'd rather someone come and do it, that way it can be properly terminated and everything.
You're saying it's a thousand dollars or something, alright.
Six thirty-seven eighty-four.
I think, uh-
That definitely means that no matter what, and that's under a thousand dollar threshold, so I can probably try and-
You do that on your own?
But it would be, I think it would, that, that price might increase if they're not doing this one work, um.
What you're saying is just the gate itself is just not too high?
It's a four foot gate and a s, and a six foot opening.
Oh.
It's not, it's not.
It's better than- It might be a three foot gate.
Oh, yeah? It's, I mean, can we order a gate and you guys just put it on?
We could, it just, we wouldn't have a term, we wouldn't have the fence terminated, I mean, there'd still be more five and a half feet.
Yeah, we have too many kids running around here, but they can get inside the plant.
We could, we could make it functional, would it be right?
Alright. I think for a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars.
Do it right.
We should have it done right and block that deal.
Who'd you talk about this?
Yeah, I, I didn't make a motion and just do it.
If I, if it's up to my thousand, we won't make a motion unless I go beyond it, so. Um, and then I could even talk to them then, I, I know there was discussion of the slide gate, um, that other one earlier is kinda made by me, go, have it closed more, it'll close automatically, but. I, I think I should get this quote updated to see if that increased, decreased, and maybe reach out to another one to see what another price would be, if they're both. The other ones are obviously way too high, that's certainly on the go, but I wanna double check that, but I'll at least have them do that smaller, update the quote.
Yeah, we'll take care of the bench all the way around the back.
Yes, yes, yeah.
How long if you do need that swing gate on front to, that, that? So, there's all the person carrying out one of that.
There's security camera.
Uh, quick update on that, he is coming in next week, he'll be here two to three days, um, to install the cameras, they will be, they'll be in when I'm back to make, by the time I'm back from vacation. And one thing I have to do is get a wall mount and a small team to display the cameras, so, that's, that is rolling forward, so.
Is that gonna be for, up at the well and stuff?
That'll be just the plant, um, there was a camera system that the, the board bought, uh, it was a budget system, it wasn't very expensive, um. I hooked him up down there and just was not impressed at all, like, they'll, they'll function, but-
I thought you had him up on the hill.
Yeah, they're gonna be, yeah, so we are, we started sheeting the well, the inside of the well, um, it got really warm and got busy, but this fall, I hope to have the well sheeted and the bill- Yeah, they're going to be, yeah, so we are, we started sheeting the well, the inside of the well, um, it got really warm and got busy, but this fall, I hope to have the well sheeted and the building up above sheeted. Once that's sheeted, the last thing we'll do is put the cameras up, that way there is some protection up there, you'll still be able to see what kind of vehicle it is and a face if somebody's that close, so. But there's so much distance from the plant to the gate, there's not too much power, so, these cameras that he's putting in are impressive, and we, we had made a motion to put that over, so, it's just. He's. So theoretically, nice meeting, security cameras are being removed from all business.
Okay, pace dead, go.
You made that short, but you didn't make any copy up for us. I never buy coffee.
Well, we haven't, Franny's completed, or I haven't really looked at it, I've been busy, so having everything for your next package. You know, I want everybody, I want Patrick in to read over it to make sure we got everything.
That's the one we try to limit down.
Yeah.
But we have them split.
Yeah, I do have them split to do different things.
Yeah.
And then as soon as we fix everything that we need to fix, and then we'll have them out for September meeting to pack.
I think everything's there, it's amazing.
Yeah, it's something that just needs up.
So we'll have those.
So we'll table them.
Table, I'll be away, but.
Table seven, eight.
Seven and eight?
Yeah.
Number nine, job description.
I haven't heard anything from you guys to, on the job description, so I'm waiting to hear from you guys, what you want me to change in the wording, so I can, so if you get that in.
I've been working on that all by myself, but it's like, you know, immediate point.
It'll all your school.
Pretty much.
Yeah, but if you guys get to, you know, just get some ideas, and if you just want to talk about them and just throw them around, so I can get them in, just want me to type them, then we can look at them as a draft in a meeting.
Alright.
You know? So.
Pretty much same thing with tap, you do.
The what?
Would the tap one be still in there?
Got that piece tabled.
I thought we really had some numbers, but I guess.
With their weights and everything, which is.
I had, I think at the last meeting, I had determined that at the five hundred dollar fee, we are breaking even.
You have to pass breakdown then, yeah.
Uh, if you look at, today would be a perfect example of that, it was our, it was a textbook tap, I mean, fought the parts, dug it, we were in and out. I mean, it was tapped within an hour and a half, two hours, um, and we contracted that dig out to Vince because he had to extend that line to the guy's house anyways, but you're already there. It's just easier for you to do it, rather than us trying to mess around with it, so, that would be, that'll be a good cost comparison of what it cost us for an easy textbook tap, um.
Yeah, will we charge him more if it costs us more to do it, on the five hundred dollars?
Well, that's, that's what we're, right now, well, Franny mentioned, we should be.
Yeah, we should be, we should buy hundred, and whatever cost you, you had hired people to come in, you can add it on, but you gotta show it, you just can't say it, you have to show the receipts, so once you pay you.
So when you come back, we can look at all those breakdown figures you shared out all by that time?
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know, like, the last couple of weeks, or last couple of taps we've had, we didn't charge additional, so I don't know if I push it with this guy, so we have a policy that, like. Would outline an updated policy, but it's still a good comparison of.
Yeah, we can make it.
Okay, we lost out this much, or we broke in, but, because it was an easy tap, we didn't have to dig the road, we found the line to tap.
So on the next meeting, we'll have a pretty good idea, so Franny can show up and table that too.
Alright, on a new business, discussion of emails.
Alright, that was something I have to put on, um, we mentioned email earlier, I'm not going to try and, um, get too crazy with that. I have a copy of the email that I sent to the supervisors, here, I want them to have a copy, um, okay, there were two other ones that came in, um, from Tracy for. One of them, she got a call from Mary Lily, um, the sewer authority, about possible truck, project enforcement, the sewer authority. We have already done the income surveys there, um, for that area because of the CDBG grant, um, she says, I assume you guys won't mind if we use them again for another project, um, but. She wanted to double check that we were okay with it, I don't see the problem, since we conducted the survey, we used our time to do it and everything, they almost need our blessing to reuse them. I don't, I don't see why, um, why not engage.
I didn't think it was totally good.
Yeah, I thought they had despite of it.
Yeah.
But. They are.
But after we go, well, I mentioned the sewer authority. They, these were there, it's already a pre-qualified area, and I know, in a minute, I don't think anybody cares if we use them, but I almost thought they had like a two-year life cycle.
Right, and we're right, we're right, I, uh.
But obviously Tracy was asking.
Right, she was willing, I didn't think anybody would be opposed, but I wanted to run fast forward and just.
Sewer authority must use them? Are we gonna allow them to do that then?
I'll make a motion to, whether it's needed or not, an, an emotion, I'll make a motion to give them, give the county the go-ahead to allow the sewer authority to use our income survey information. We need a second?
Yeah, we need a second.
We're just, we let them use your already.
The income surveys that we did.
I'm not standing this, that's, I'm having a hard time understanding.
To be eligible for a CDBG grant.
This for me?
Yeah, go on.
To be eligible for a CDBG grant, you have to follow, in- incomes have to fall within a cer- a certain threshold, it has to be deemed a low income area. Um, in order to do that, they couldn't use census information for the forest project area, so we went out and mailed and handed, and handed out, uh.
What year was this?
Surveys.
Just last year for the.
Year before anything, twenty eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, for this.
Yeah, it was around June of eighteen, um.
I see, I see.
So they want to kind of piggyback and reuse our surveys for a project that they have coming up, so they wouldn't have to go around and do it, the work was already done, I mean.
Is the information still accurate, I mean?
That's what Brian was concerned about, they're only good for so long, Tracy wouldn't be asking if they weren't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's like.
So if they're still good, the county's asking us, so.
But it's, so they would have to, the grants are due in August, so they must still be eligible.
So as long as she's okay with it, and he's okay with it, like.
Why not?
Why not? I guess, you know?
Yeah, I'd, I'd say okay, as long as it's checked that it's, you know, up to date.
Yeah, she, it's on her, yeah.
I was honestly surprised she asked, I didn't think we would have to say in it, because it's, it's county-owned, no, but.
Yeah, but we did the work on it.
But you did the work for it.
We did the work, and it's probably protected under some privacy law, so.
But we're trying to get along.
Absolutely.
If, if anybody is reaching out to the sewer authority, I mean, it, it seems like they're a little behind on everything, um, let them know that the Burndale area already pre-qualifies. I don't know if Tracy had reached out to them and told them that, but, I mean, if they're gonna be looking for grant money, they should know that the Burndale area already qualifies from the census. So if they're looking for another project area, they have force off of our income surveys and Burndale as well.
Absolutely.
I'll give you the motion.
Oh, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, the only other thing she had mentioned quickly in the email, we, uh.
But.
Our, uh, our board chairperson is employed by Continental Construction, um, so, anything regarding. We shouldn't really have any decisions regarding the project, because that's through the county, but if anything were to come up, you have to.
Our engineers have already explained this to me that this would happen.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
I can't help where I work, you know?
If you were a stakeholder, an owner, it'd be one thing, you, that's just, we all have to work somewhere, I abstain from stuff here pertaining to me. Same thing.
And when we pay EAs, we're gonna make two different checks up, one's for the forest and one's just for regular, so he would abstain from the forest project.
Right, that's the big thing, anything, the fo- the bills for forest project, you have to abstain from.
And it will be separated, so.
And again, for the most part, we shouldn't, in terms of Paranormal Construction, we have, no, we don't need to approve any of their bills or anything, all that goes through the county. Um, the only way that we would is if somehow the total project cost would go over the big grant threshold of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And, uh, they did, that she spoke to the, the county solicitor, um, there is no problem with you working with them, it's just a matter of, so if there's any question of that.
You're workable or don't?
You gonna be working then?
I, I don't know, I really don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Purchase of bolts and bins.
That was something Justin looked into, um.
You want me to stand?
Okay, through FAS and all, um, he can get a shelving unit bin full of various sized bolts, um.
Bolts and nuts and washers.
Bolts and nuts, washers, lock nuts, uh, the initial cost is what's expensive, because you have to buy a whole kit, if you run out of a bin, you can just replace that bin as needed, um. That is four hundred ninety-nine ninety-nine, um, the other thing is a shelving unit, just blank shelving with drawers, we can put in our corp stop, curb stops, compression fittings, et cetera. To try and organize the shelves out there, um, so it's under the spending threshold, or is his lower than mine?
No, it's, it's, uh, just one thing, it's not, it's not, um, one individual, it's our whole thing.
Okay, so, it's under the spending threshold, but I recommended to him, and he agreed, that we should run it through the board, just so you're aware, if there was any large opposition to it. We could see what the board wanted to do as far as one or the other, um.
This is something we're, we use a lot of?
The shelving unit is what, if, if we're only gonna pick one of the two, I, we could use the shelving unit, because right now those fittings are just.
Nowhere to put anything.
Out there on the shelf, and we might be able to eliminate one of the big shelves and make room, more room out there. The bolts, I can see both sides, if he has them when we need them, we come up and get them, and that's that, but at the same time, if we have a project where, oh, we need six bolts this side, this is like. We can go to Burke's and get them, it's just with the board, rather us go to Burke's and get them per project.
Well, you know, you can also be, you can also get them down to Giordano's.
Yeah.
That whole place is.
Yeah, ten mile, ten minutes away, so.
I would agree with a, a nice bin, put them in, but as far as buying bolts and that, you go to Tractor Supply or Royal King and buy them by bulk.
Or even Harbor Freight, sure they'd have some kind of bolt.
By bulk, and you can situate them all in there what you need.
Yeah, study that a little bit, you know?
But a nice bin would be nice, so you've got everything, you're not looking around for stuff.
Yeah.
How much is the bin, Patrick?
Three ninety-nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what are we gonna do when that?
You don't, don't need a motion for you to get that, because that's under the.
I'll give, I can give him the okay to get the shelving unit, and then the bolts, we can just.
Yeah, look into that a little deeper.
Even if he stocks up on some commonly used ones.
Exactly, yeah.
It won't be that ridiculous, we don't have to buy the.
Giordano's open every day of the week, if you guys need something while you're on doing something, it takes a minute to run up there and get it.
Yep, so.
Is shelving unit worth that money?
They're quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it'll have like a metal frame and then the.
The bench pull-out.
Plastic pull-out boxes, they're more expensive than I thought, Uline has some, uh, this one here, so they're, I'd say that's a fair price.
Okay, fire hall water usage.
Now, can I ask a question, or what, what are we looking for there for the fire hall, what is, what is the?
Basically, we're running into the issue, I, I think it's addressed at this time, but, um, basically, we're running into, they have a two-inch water line at the fire hall. When they draw water to refill any of their trucks with tanker and engine, there's enough draw on that line, then it calls me every single time they do it.
That you can drop a bomb.
Not gonna lie, I have a little gunshot, every time this plant calls me this month, where's the leak, uh, where's the leak, it happened. Couple ti- well, it happened right after the Burndale leak, they can shoot, the hydrant separated, we got this going all over, going, oh, no, they filled up a truck, and I said to the chief. Hey, can you please let me know when next time you're gonna do that, if it's an emergency, I don't care, I'll figure it out, I'm not gonna stop them. But if it's, a truck gets back, we're gonna fill it up, this and that, or service call or something, I need to know, Justin needs to know, um, for example, this past weekend. The tanker came back from being worked on, it was empty, they filled it up. Justin called the fire, I was, I was away this weekend, Justin called the fire hall, no answer, called the fire hall again, no answer, so he's gone, well, at this point, I'm deeming it a leak. He got twenty-five dollars an hour of overtime and time and a half, because he's doing his duty as an, as an employee to go look for a leak.
Yeah, but he's a fireman.
Surely he can.
Well, he was, he was acting as a water for an employee.
He could not have called someone from the fire company.
I guess he tried.
He's tried, I've tried.
But the, so when he did talk to somebody about it, um, he talked to, he talked to Brandon about it, Brandon's like, yeah, no problem. The next day, someone else filled a truck, he called, no answer, called, no answer, and when he did end up speaking to that person, there was some tempers flare, and. No, we're not calling, I'm like, I'm not, and what it gets me, I'm not changing it, we're not changing for, charging for the money, it's just a courtesy call, because. If I'm in Dubois', I'm anywhere, I'm at home, I don't care where I am, my first thought that goes through my head is leak, when right now, it's, is it a leak or is it the fire department? So yesterday when it happened, or two days ago it happened, I said to Justin, I'm gonna give it ten minutes and see what happens, that's ten minutes I can be halfway here, you know, so.
Yeah, they need, they need a letter, yeah.
So what we did do, we typed up a letter, for non-emergency use, please contact us before drawing, before filling. Here's Justin's phone number, my phone number, plant phone number, et cetera, um, it didn't seem well received at first, but I think it was okay now, um.
They still want a letter for the trustees, or it can be handled, because they're.
So this is a letter, I can take the draft off of it, right before you leave, so you can sign it, so if this makes sense for everybody, if you wanna read it.
Yeah, like, we're not, we're not picking a fight, we're not, but it's, it's just.
They don't seem to realize that it sets off a trigger that makes us think there's a big leak somewhere.
Yeah, I have that trigger set low, because not all big, not all leaks are big gushers, I have it set at two hundred twenty-five gallons per minute distribution, um, when I get on the scanner and I see this. Like, I'm not psychic, I can't, so, we have the potential of it costing a, a, costing time, every time they do it, they're costing a lot of money, it's just, it's as simple as Facebook Messenger, pick up the phone. That way I know, alright, that's why I called, carry on, so, but, not, it, it, it doesn't need to be a big deal, because it's not a big deal, but.
It just is courtesy.
Exactly.
Cause I, I didn't understand, I was reading two thousand twelve twenty can.
So when they take the draft off of that?
Fire law, regulations, I didn't know if that came to.
I think it says something in there too, like, if they're, if they are drafting from a hydrant for an extended period of time.
Fire hydrants will only be used for immediate, emergency, training, or other special uses, but the fire hydrant will require prior approval.
Right.
So then it tells you how we charge, you know, the new building and everything, so I didn't know if we needed it, or.
For their two-inch meter, I mean, it's, it's the same as other two-inch meters in the system, like, for the school, the school doesn't carry a big draw, so they don't have to call us, so. They're permitted to have that meter, they're permitted to take that flow, it's just, it's so close to the water, but.
So we're gonna send them that letter, she's gonna print it out, we're gonna sign, send it to.
So the draft letter okay the way it is?
Do we wanna get into the Tony quotable water and your tanker?
I haven't talked to him about it, because that's where it's going, going into wells.
That raises another whole different.
So. If they do it.
Put the water in the wells?
Yeah.
So that, like I said, the, the, the big issue is, regardless of what there is, and we're using it for non-emergencies, we've been. We've been hearing that they're doing service calls. When somebody's well goes dry or spring goes dry, they're pumping in water. Then at that point, it's no longer city water, it's fire truck water to refill. So, that could put a liability on you too. Somebody gets sick and goes, oh, that came from J Township. No, that's not my water, that's fire truck.
From the fire truck's water. Because they also fill the tankers from the spring.
So I don't know if that's something the authority should address too, or if that's something we kinda feel like.
You guys aren't billing for that water, though.
No.
It's going into somebody's well.
Yes. That two-inch meter, the two-inch meter in the fire hall is for the purpose of filling trucks after a fire.
It is needed.
Did you read? Yeah, and it's, it's meter, but since it's used for emergencies.
Yeah, you don't have no way.
We don't, we don't send them a bill for it. So if it is indeed going to fill somebody's well, fill a swimming pool, or whatever.
What was the purpose should be filled?
Well, they're not ours to fill swimming pools.
No, they don't fill pools.
I don't fill pools.
They, if they did in years past, it was from the trip.
Yeah.
It's right in bylaws, they don't fill them. In our bylaws. Yeah, we don't fill swimming pools.
Well, if you're gonna allow them to fill pools, you shouldn't be allowed to fill pools.
Well, that's an issue, same as Gardner Hill. We're not, if they're doing that, they have to know that they get sick from this, not on the.
Right.
If we, if we sent a letter or anything to Gardner Hill, we trade a court, commending that situation.
And yet?
No. I mean, I think that ought to have been done, because we can't be liable, because some people are still thinking they're drinking our water. Somebody could say.
This isn't starting anything with the fire company, it's just to stop.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I understand where you're at, I just didn't know, and I was looking at the bylaws, but I knew our bylaws.
They have, they have a good, they, they have free water provided to them for emergency use. You never abuse it with them. It's for emergency use. They're using it to fill systems, wells, anything. Then why can't Chad Lilly take his tanker, fill it up and dump it out of a fire hydrant, or a pressure washer, or, or me? Oh, I have a sister that, different house.
If we can't have treated water go out on the ground.
Sign it on your name?
Right. I think before you write that, I think you ought to add in there, they know it's truck holes. They, they actually know it, they dump it away. So if they're actually giving that water away, you know, they can estimate for, so we get something back on that wall, but they're using it for wells.
Yeah, and that's what I ask of them, like, when they do, like, before they hit a hydrant, like it says in there, they'll contact you. They've sprayed off the, the St. Joseph Church parking lot three years, and I say, no problem, I know it, as long as I know when you're doing it, when it calls me, I know what's going on, keep track of your consumption, and it'll be fine.
Don't do it down in the ground.
Same thing now. Something I, if, if it's gonna happen all the time, where they're doing service calls, I would suggest to the board, I mean, I, I'm not pushing for it now, but if it's gonna be something he's putting up. They make meters that attach to hydrants. We can make that a requirement, have an operator on site. For non-emergency use, the operator has to crack the hydrant, the operator has to have the meter hooked up. That way, we know, the board decides, it's just the St. Joseph Church parking lot, we always do that for free. Board decides to do it for free. If they're filling anything else, like a well, we need to charge for it. I would still discourage that, because like Brian said, I'm not allowed to dump chlorinated water out of the well building on the ground, so I probably shouldn't dump chlorinated water into somebody's.
That's why your swimming pool has to be dumped in the source. You're not leaving, dump your swimming pool out on the ground.
Then you're in a, in a position too, if they're taking the chlorinated water and putting it into an unsterile vessel, that water is no good anymore.
It's not potable water.
No, that's exactly.
So maybe we just simply cite, the policy states it's for emergency use anyway.
Instead of we're adding to that?
What do we call it? Using potable water in your tanker is not considerable, we can condone this type of thing at the time. I mean, you're essentially saying the same thing, but it might be more professional to say.
If you give anybody water for a well or something.
Please continue to follow our rules and regulations, which say blah, blah, blah. That way we're citing an action document that they agreed to.
And keep, keep an average on what they're, keep, keep an average.
I mean, I could calculate it every time they do it, it's math.
Can you add to that now, or do you want me to put this on? We wait till after we finish the meeting?
Yeah, we, we had to get someone.
Get him on the road, going home, how about it? Okay, alright, we need a, need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No, we got number four.
Sitting ready.
I'm gonna have it on my favor.
Maybe, maybe write it.
You didn't put it on my.
You didn't write it.
To my gear.
You didn't write it.
Bank card.
I'll signature a card.
Okay, number four, new business, stand corrected.
I have another one.
No motion for the adjournment, yeah, no, okay.
I wanna put Lisa Brown's on the signature cards for signing checks, just for emergency, for, you know, like, if I need to send another person to sign checks.
Right now, it's just myself, Deb and Sharon, yeah. Are we adding her, or are we removing?
No, we're just gonna keep you on as emergency, you know, like.
Free your check.
For my check, that's all you sign, so. If Deb's not around, if something, if she needed something, yeah.
I hope this gets on my.
You do have my number, right Sharon?
Yeah, I think so, so. I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll second that motion. To put Lisa on, for the signing.
Who made the first?
I made the second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll have to write the letter to the bank, and then you'll have to go to the bank and sign, so as soon as I can be okay for it, I will.
I did not abstain, but technically, if we all three abstained, it wouldn't carry, so we're good.
Lisa has to abstain.
I abstained, I did.
I, well, we don't, Deb and I don't.
You don't have to, you're a board member on this here one, you don't abstain on this one.
Did you say there was a number five, or?
Yes, I do have something else.
Okay, number five, new business.
Um, for our insurance, after three years, and this is our policy renewal, um, they want us to do, uh, contractor's management practices, and he recommended our lawyer to look at this, to see if everything's in kosher, because this is what he says. He says, proper risk transfers required before a program. We'll need a copy of their written sub-agreement. They will need to require all subs to sign a hold harmless and identification agreement protecting the township. Lastly, all subcontractors need to name J Township as additional insured on a primary basis, including completed operation. So he gave me an example, and he recommended that our solicitor take a look at this. That's a new thing that's out, I guess, on this here thing. So, this is for our renewal policy, it's in no hurry, but I need, I'm going to take this to our.
What up with this insurance company? Every time we turn around at something.
That's the way it is, there's new laws and regulations and.
Time just flies that quickly.
Yeah, so.
So does it be signed after he reads it, or anything like that, or?
I don't think, I just, that's, that's our policy, so I'll go from there afterwards. I just wanted to make the board aware of it, I just got it today. So, I haven't even submitted this to our lawyer yet.
We'll do it, do your thing.
I got one more thing to do. Um, for the entitlement grant through the county, um, they do two different grants, entitlement and then the competitive. Um, the entitlement one is due August thirteenth, submitted it to Tracy yesterday for the pre-qualified Burndale area. Um, it covered a hundred and ninety-three structures, eighteen of which were vacant and or commercial. So we requested for a hundred and seventy-five meters and MXUs. Um, that will be a hundred percent grant money that's awarded, roughly a total of like forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, obviously Patrick and those guys will have to install, but, but that's what we're applying for, the meters for that.
That's awesome.
Wonderful. Um, if you can, give me a motion that if I need the application signed, Jim can sign it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
I emailed Tracy to see if we needed a signature, and she hasn't gotten back to me yet, so I figured to get that out of the way right now.
Okay.
Alright, I have a motion for adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that motion. On favor?
Aye.
Alright.